John Kelly is here, Rebecca Hansen. Bill Bolt. Steve Rhodes. Do we have any public comments unrelated to the agenda? I see none, so we need to approve minutes from four sessions. The oldest would be April 2nd. Any comments on the minutes from April 2nd? We need to approve these, Sharon. What's the official?
I beg your pardon?
Seek a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes for April 2nd?
As written, unless there's amendments.
Sorry to be here.
No, it's okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to April 16th. This is the meeting for the hotel. Any discussion or comments on these minutes? Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
And seconded?
Thanks, Bill.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the minutes of April 23rd. Okay, this is the hotel again. Any comments on this set of minutes? Do you have a motion?
They're moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
And last, the minutes for May 21st. Primarily the change of use for the old pizza shop. Any comments on these minutes? Do you have a motion? And seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's it for minutes.
I'm sorry, who moved the motion?
We did. John.
You and he? I thought you said second.
John moved it.
Okay, got it. And who was second?
I think he did, Ray Burton, seconded himself.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Geez, you're right on the dead topic here, Sharon, I'm telling you.
It's on me, I like it.
I'm going to be indicted for bad parliamentary procedure.
Do you want a second? Okay.
Do we have any correspondence and/or paperwork?
No, except I have given everybody a copy of the ad that's coming out in next week's Plymouth Record Enterprise on the visioning session on the 16th. And we are disseminating it everywhere, and I actually have extra copies if anyone would like to take a pile home to pass out to friends who are Plymouth residents. We're trying to get some widespread dissemination on that.
Great job with the newspaper, top of the phone.
I know, and it's pretty accurate.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah.
Do you want it distributed like downtown, or is that what you're thinking?
Well, if anyone's amenable to it, I don't know if you can post that as a bill. But yeah, if anyone's sure, that'd be great. I mean, I do have some print venues and the website and library and the usual plastered everywhere, and there will be some ads coming out, but it won't hurt, so.
Does the college have any news?
Well, I'm wondering that.
When they're in session, they have like a distribution.
Yeah, see, that's the thing, yeah. I mean, I was thinking I would, work session, doing paper dolls here, I was thinking I'd try to send it to some venue over there and hopefully they'd put it out widespread. But unfortunately, the timing is quasi shut down.
It's probably in Steph or around the town.
But yeah, well, for the most part, yeah, yep. So we'll try to get that out.
Do you want me to inquire of what my sister works in?
Oh, that would be wonderful, because I have an electronic copy, so yeah, that would be wonderful, thank you.
Could you pull this to me electronically?
Me as well. Yep.
You all set?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I guess we're gonna move on to continuation of the master plan.
Take it away, Tara.
And I apologize, but for some reason I seem to not brought my copy with me.
I have some extras.
I brought some extras.
In spite of someone's reminder.
Admonishments.
Admonishments.
Yeah, I've got a couple too, so.
Yeah, I have one as well.
You pass that up, and then I'll give you and Bill one to share, to see what we're talking about.
Yes, I do.
And I, if you can copy it, I don't think last time, this page that just made you especially be something, that might help us while we have this, I have this. Do you want to talk a little bit about the visioning session first?
Sure.
How I've done these in the past that's worked pretty well is to do kind of an introduction to what is the master plan and what are we doing, what kinds of things does the master plan talk about, and then hand out something and ask people to write on it. Some question will be on there, like what characteristic of the community is most important to you, and then a second question, that's something like, what do you think is the highest need? And then, pretty quickly, while people take a little break, we gather those up, and Christine is gonna come with me, so there's two of us to kind of gather about, group those, and then I facilitate the discussion based on the topics that jumped out of those, in terms of, you know, with each characteristic, talk about what are the threats and needs to hold on to that characteristic. And it's worked pretty well to give me what I need to draft a visioning statement, and also to get ideas for the survey, what are the issues that are on people's minds? If people say they want X, then the survey is to find out, well, what options for addressing X are people most supportive of? We heard they want X, but do they want A, B, or C approach to X? So it's kind of a linear process that way. In terms of logistics, is there any way to have food for people while they, or any way to, needed food, or, so that people could snack while we gather up those cards?
I mean, I think, I think my budget could handle it. It might be fairly simple.
Yeah, I mean, some boxes or cookies and crackers.
Yeah, cookies and crackers, yeah. Yeah, I'll make a note of that.
Any wild guess at how many people?
You were guessing was 100, what, 150 last time? Whatever it was, it was like.
Oh, I don't know, I wasn't. Yeah, yeah.
That's what I should be prepared for, in terms of how many?
Yeah, I don't think the facility. I think it may be slightly lower than that for the actual fire count. No, it's 100 and something, but.
Yeah, we'll go through that with the function on the 20th there.
Right, right, right. Yeah, no, I'll get some food.
Actually, we discussed like an overflow, you know, putting, at least, I mean, this roofed area.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll meet you at 5:30?
Yep, yep. That's enough time.
Is there a screen there? Or do I bring a screen?
I don't, no, I've got to go down and do a physical walkthrough.
I think we've used screens, was a screen in one of those back rooms or something like that.
Do you want to let me know?
Yeah.
Ours is fine, but really awful.
Yeah, it's probably hard to get in the car. I've got to go down and see her anyway.
Anything else people can think of for outreach? Business groups, other large employers in town? It seems like through people emailing groups in town and asking people to share that, you could cover a lot of.
I had asked, I had asked the gals to get me any group mailing lists, you know, that they already had set up.
Has anybody ever asked Walmart or any of those places to, you know, trying to bring those into the fold?
I think that would be a great idea, Walmart, Rite Aid, any.
You know, it's always the college and the hospital, hospital and the college, the college and the hospital.
Right.
You know, and.
Any, any large employers in town would be great.
Any of your.
Would they be willing to put it in a paper?
Ford car dealer out there.
If they all have employee bulletin boards in the box, too.
Yeah, yeah, we just, I mean, I suppose worst case scenario, if we can't get any electronic connection, we can go out and hand out flyers.
All of those chain stores have some employee bulletin board and.
Who's the developer out there? Can't think of his name right now.
McGinnly. John, or is it not John, who's the, I mean, Boulder Point?
Mike McGinnly.
Yeah, McGinnly.
Well, I don't think I like the, who's the gentleman that is developing Boulder Point?
Ryan Young.
Right, but most of Boulder Point's gonna be the hospital or connected to the hospital.
What about the Chamber?
Well, I thought about that too today, so I'll get that out, yep.
But if you could get McGinnly, he might help out. He might have somebody that has an actual economic cluster instead of a nonprofit.
Walmart. Yeah, I'll try to get the businesses, I don't, just not sure what we have for database, but.
Every time that we do it, we seem to get Main Street, the hospital, and the college, and that's the end of it.
But you don't need the database, if you have one person connected with each of those, not to send it out.
But, I don't know, even know if I have one person, so. But I'm about to find out.
Yeah, I think that's important. The other thing kind of connected to that, because it would be an opportunity to find some people, I don't know if you had any discussions about having a master plan committee, which would be a couple people joining the planning board to work on this.
I think you did.
Yeah. Well, AM, or like, was it a couple of planning board people and?
Yeah, I think that we talked about some of the subcommittees as planning board people, and not outside of it, which is a good idea, I think it's.
Yeah, I think maybe once you introduce this process on the ground with the visioning session, you may get people understanding the process, and therefore then wanting to participate.
I also think that we should go out and reach out to people, because basically, what I've found out, at least in this town, is that the only people that come and volunteer are the people that want to do what they want to be done, not as far as the benefit of Plymouth.
Well, that's what the survey would be, everybody's opportunity. A very typical kind of person that would be on a master plan committee would be a former planning board chair. You know, people who've maybe kind of retired from volunteering a lot, but have that knowledge and skills there still.
Who could verges it, would be a good one.
Or chairs from other town boards. People that have a lot, you know, that are really good resource. So what do you want to do about that? Do you, you would appoint, the planning board would appoint the committee as a, it would be a subcommittee of the planning board. You'd give it its charge, and you would tell that group kind of how you want to relate, like, do you, sometimes it's the whole planning board and a couple other people, and their meeting is the master plan committee that day. I just finished a master plan for a town that the planning board didn't want to hear anything about until it was done, and I dreaded the meeting of presenting it to the planning board, I thought, I hope they don't send me in a whole nother direction, but they liked it, so we're going to public hearing next week. But, so it's all over the map of it's yours to do, but it's a decision that really needs to be made, you know, pretty quick.
The main purpose is to bring people from outside of the planning board to the table to talk about it. I mean, there's no sense in doing it amongst ourselves, there's only five of us, four of us anyways, right? So including other viewpoints would be the reason to do it.
You might have an idea of having somebody that was on the planning board when this last master plan came up, because that could give you some of the benefits and downfalls of what they did.
That's a good point.
Wasn't the last time like far more open? I mean, there were like several subcommittees and, you know.
It, well, it was, yeah, it took, what, five years? I mean, it was a, it was a very long process.
It used to take two hours to read the minutes, too.
Yeah, yeah, well, there's, I mean, your master plan lists a lot of folks. We're only dealing with a couple of smaller updates at this point, I think it was pretty, I mean, it was very comprehensive.
Where did the funding come from? I mean, that must have looked like an expensive project.
That was before 2008, and everything was full bore, man, money meant nothing. We were gonna have a $9 million fire station and police station at that time, so. Things are quite down.
It was a, it was a long process, and, and very thorough, but, you know, as we're getting to now, the implementation piece is that big, and it wasn't terribly pragmatic, some of it.
I mean, it sounds like a lot of it's not even familiar to people involved now, so it's a good time to be revisiting it.
So Tara, would that normally, I mean, would you form that type of committee in advance of the visioning session, or as a result of the visioning session?
I would do it as a result of.
So maybe you say.
We could invite people, that's why I wanted to know kind of what, what your drawers are for that, of do you want, as part of the conversation, for us to say, you know, to get in touch with Sharon if you want to volunteer for the master plan committee?
Yeah.
And it'll be about one meeting a month for 18 months, or? And then you have to be prepared to take whoever volunteers, that has to be okay, as well as the maybe of people that you want to reach out to and invite.
Well, that's the thing, you, you want representation, but you don't want an unwieldy group, and you don't want repetitive interests, so you need to think about what you want.
Right, but you also want to give the impression of complete.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you want to turn away help, ever. Well, you know, I don't.
You think people should be on like, you know, outside people should be on, say like from the last planning board meeting, on a committee, or should they just be invited for, say, one time and have them speak to, to the.
Well, we did set up the work plan so that there'll be topical meetings where you invite certain people. So this would be, this would, what we're talking about now is the people that you'd want to meet every month and work the whole, so kind of the broader view people. So I can mention that, too, that there'll be, I'll mention the topical meeting.
Subcommittees, yeah.
I forgot, wait, I didn't call them stakeholders, I don't think, because I don't like that term, but, something, maybe they call it stakeholders, but we were gonna have some kind of roundtable discussions on certain topics, so I'll, I'll mention that, too, they weren't, they're not subcommittees.
Well, I think, I think.
I'll mention the roundtables.
After we get through a meeting, too, that that should be written up in the paper to say what maybe our progress is, because we're supposed to be, we're supposed to be transparent, but we're not transparent, you know? We don't, I read the paper in Meredith and some of these other towns, every time they have a planning board meeting or select board meeting, it's in the paper, it tells us basically what, what it was all about, and there's a lot of interest in that. And the last, in the last time, there was absolutely nothing like that.
So after it, I can work with Sharon to get some high points in a follow-up article and mention in there that you'll be looking for volunteers, but also that you'll be having those roundtable discussions on a certain topic. So somebody might say, gee, I really only want to participate in that conversation, not commit to a monthly meeting for a year and a half. And then, I guess at your next planning board meeting, you would officially appoint your committee, and then that's maybe who I would work with from that point on.
John, just as a response to what you just said, is it just me, or is there absolutely no reporting in the Plymouth paper about what happens in our planning board?
There's, it's televised, PPTV.
Well, right, it's televised. That medium is.
Yeah, it's televised, but there's nothing in the paper, because I read the Meredith paper, and the Meredith paper tells all about Guilford and Gilman and all this other stuff, and Meredith, and Plymouth is silent.
Well, it's above the fold on the front page right now, Sharon.
I get an outreach.
Yeah, that's a one-time shot, and I think it should be.
Right, so we'll do some follow-up.
Right, but the reporter, the editor and the reporter of the paper are aware of this process now.
Yeah, it just strikes me as strange when you read the Plymouth paper, there's, you know, the talk of the towns, with all the other towns around Plymouth that report on local government, but there's never anything about Plymouth.
Well, I don't, yeah, and I don't think those towns are writing up stories of their own and asking to have them submitted, I think the coverage is going that way, so I don't understand that.
Anyway, a little off-topic, but it seems strange.
See, we used to have, when, when, I've been on a plan board since I was a child, and it, back then, there was a reporter here all the time, and now, and there was Mary, I mean, Sarah Jane was here occasionally, you know, and we had a representative from the college here all the time, but we don't have any of that anymore, and I don't quite understand why. You know, we have our little meetings and it's televised, but most of the time, you know, the voice is on, or something else is on, and that, you know, trumps the good old exciting planning board meeting.
Actually, I mentioned that, I saw Tim Keefe at a recent meeting, and it was so nice to see Tim pretty much at every meeting that went on, even the dean of students.
That was a part of his job.
Yes and no, I mean, I'm sure he could have like, you know.
Oh, yeah, he could have.
But he was also a town person.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, he.
But that would, that would be nice if we could do that again.
And he participated in the meetings, too.
Yeah. So I mentioned that, it would be kind of nice to have that kind of representation from the college, again, university, excuse me.
So what do you, how do you see this working once you have a committee? Say, at the July meeting, you appoint a committee, and it's, is it gonna be just part of the planning board? You were saying that you talked about having a subcommittee in the planning board, or is it gonna be all over?
I think we had a discussion, or if I recall correctly, and we're gonna target like two or three, or something like that.
Right, right, because we've come up with two, essentially two surveys, one that's more oriented towards the college community.
No, I was thinking two or three planning board members to be appointed to that, you know, committee.
Right, right.
Well, won't just be about the survey, that'll be one, that'll be a couple meetings of the 18 meetings.
Yeah, but there again, I would hope that the whole, I mean, those people that are appointed, whatever, targeted, bring it back. I mean, not that you're such a huge board that you should probably.
Well, that's part of what I'm trying to find out here, is I, it would be beyond what I can fit in to be able to meet with the subcommittee, and then the whole, the planning board as us, to do two meetings for everything, so we need to think about how that's gonna work logistically, if it's not the whole planning board and it's a sub group.
And it needs, it needs to work with some self-determination, too, I can't just crack the whip and make people do stuff, they have to have initiative to do it.
So you don't have people yet who are.
That will volunteer.
All, all people will need to do is respond to things, really.
Right.
Be at the meetings.
Right, right.
No, it's not difficult. But you don't have people that are volunteered yet? Gosh, there's four people here tonight.
I thought Michael mentioned some people, but I don't remember.
I don't think we got to that point, but, you know, I mean, should anybody be refused? I mean, because if we all have interests in being on that.
No, I mean.
Is there, is there an issue of quorum?
It's, it's generally, it's generally, the, once you've appointed the committee, your meeting is not committee, and you would, you'd need a quorum to make decisions, but the only decision is really at the end of the process of voting to recommend it to the planning board, so it's not so much of a problem. But you, but one other thing, though, you certainly, I mean, the benefit of it is not everybody has time for a second meeting a month if there's regular planning board business to fill a meeting, so it really needs to be the people who, who are available for a second meeting when that's needed, because the continuity is really important. You, it just doesn't work if people come, they missed last month and they come this month and say, well, I don't like any of this, and you're kind of back to the, then you take five years, as Sharon was saying with last time, so, so that's really where, you know, what probably the most important criterion is, is.
So Tara, do you have a sense of what the scope of work is on, from meeting to meeting throughout the process?
It's mostly gonna be coming to the meeting with comments on something I sent.
Okay, so it's reviewing your draft work more than anything else?
Right.
What I'd like to see is, is certain subjects that we are going to dwell on that particular meeting of the subcommittee, instead of sitting there saying, what do you think, what do you think, what do you think? You never get anywhere that way. If you said, well, we've got three things that we want the subcommittee to talk about tonight, then they talk about it, discuss it.
Right, and, and you're also gonna host other people, because what we, what we said was that we were gonna have roundtable discussions on a bunch of topics, so the committee would host those maybe as part of the meeting.
That's right, yeah. Exactly.
It's never just gonna be, oh, let's meet and talk, none of us have time for that.
But we do have a limited scope of work also, so we can't, you know, it's gotta be a balance, because we've been contracted for, not that the conversation can occur, but we can't deal with every single realm and subset. I know the 2008 master plan had many, many chapters in it.
Right, and the, and this.
That's not where we're headed.
What you'd asked for, for this project, was just updating the land use and vision and implementation, but implementation is, is the outcome of all those other pieces.
Right.
So my idea for how to, how to update the implementation section without having any money and time to do the background on those topics was to gather the experts together for, for a roundtable kind of discussion.
Yeah, I think we had spoken somewhat to, to trying to start an economic development chapter, if you will, or at least outline it.
Right, and that's one of the roundtable discussions.
Right, right.
So, so you'll think about that and make that happen at your July, I won't be at your July meeting if it's the first.
Can you see July from, oh, it's on April.
I don't know.
Yes. Uh, Friday's the third, Thursday's the second of July. July.
I'm hoping to be away that week and the following week.
Yeah, July 2nd. Yeah, yeah, so Tara won't be available.
Right, but you'll, you need to make sure that, at that meeting, you, you come out of that meeting with your master plan committee appointed.
Do you ever have during these master plan things, have people that are outside of town, like various people that have industries or anything like that, that might give us ideas of how we could get new business in the town?
So the economic development discussion definitely, we talked about that.
Other than nonprofit operations.
And even surrounding communities that have had some success, I think that makes a lot of sense for the economic development.
Because the last, the last time we had the master plan, it was pretty well loaded, one-sided, so it was.
Is there, is there somebody from the Chamber that would?
I'm going to.
Some leadership there that you should get on your committee?
To reach out, well, the Chamber, the Chamber has just more. To reach out, well, the chamber, the chamber has just, um, morphed, a lot of the small chambers of commerce have morphed into one large one, so I would think this would be a perfect opportunity for that.
Is it the Pemmy?
I don't, I'm not even sure of the name of it.
Yeah.
Cause there's. Pemmy Val, is it the Pemmy Valley something, or?
Central, yeah, where it gets in.
Central New Hampshire.
Okay.
Huh.
Now, is Gus Stevens still the, uh, lead?
I think so.
All right.
I mean, we should be getting that information to, they should be coming to Town Hall so we can.
Well, there is, uh, I mean, there's a select board member that's a.
Right, well, maybe, maybe he could do something.
In fact, actually, if you could get the town administrator in one of the, some of these meetings, it might, it might help out.
What area does that cover?
It's like around three or four chambers wrapped up.
Central Hampshire's generally thought of as the Conker area. That's an odd name for a Plymouth area, Chamber.
Central Conker area, that, but, um.
Yeah, I, I don't care for the name because I don't think it defines.
Central RPC is Conker.
Right.
Well, I, I think at one time, Plymouth had a Chamber of Commerce and Holness had a Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, there were a lot of little ones.
They grew, grew together, then it's Camden.
It's the Pemmy that's named.
Yeah, there was a, yeah, yeah, maybe, um, Jewel's a PPTV person could chime in as well.
Anyway, that might be a good person to think about for your committee.
I think what we should do is get ideas as to what, what is available in Plymouth and stuff like that, and then we can discuss it because if we don't find new ideas and so forth, it won't make a lot of difference.
Well, that's what this visioning, uh, session, right, hoping to at least start getting that sampling of input from the public, pick their brains if they want.
We have to, we have to go out and reach for it, we can't just.
No, no, but I mean, we, we've got to see what people's opinions are out there, their perceptions, because we can't speak for them. So be curious to see.
There are five regions, twenty-one towns, infinite possibilities, by the way, but.
Twenty-one towns?
Yeah.
Yeah, they take a, uh, when, when a large commercial building comes in, like Walmart and Lowe's was, had the same idea until it gets thrown out of Plymouth, but they figure Wolfville to Littleton to, to Hanover, that, that is your market area, and Plymouth is right in the middle of it.
Hmm.
So they figured about thirty, thirty-six by forty miles, they draw a circle, and that's their market area.
All right, so I think we have a sense of what we're doing at the visioning, and what you need to do for follow-up at your July meeting to keep things rolling.
Yeah.
Um, and then I am available the first Thursday of August and September, so if, if it ends up that most of the planning board is part of the master plan committee, and you wanted to just meet like before the regular planning board meeting or something, that, that's fine with me.
Well, we do have, I mean, this, this first Thursday is dedicated to anything, we don't, this is kind of the work task right now, is, is the master plan, so.
But you don't ever have applications to?
No, we have two dates set aside monthly.
Okay.
We have the third Thursday, which is usually, that's our public hearing application.
So you don't really maybe need to meet July second?
We all need to.
While you're doing the appointing the master plan committee, you could do that at your.
Well, we could, I mean, right, but we've.
July session.
The, the first Thursday apparently appears to be earmarked for this process, which is fine, unless something you're servicing.
But it is not gonna be anything to do that date except.
No, except, right, appoint the committee, so.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think you need to meet just to meet.
The Dilbert syndrome, I don't know, we'll see.
It'll be a really short meeting and not worth people's time. I won't have the visioning in your hands yet from the visiting session. I would just put that on your other agenda, and then we'll meet the first Thursday in August as the master plan committee, whoever is doing that.
Well, you're right, it is, it is a holiday weekend.
It is, and you'll have met twice in June, you, you, tonight, and originally, you already have met.
The Town Hall is closed on Friday the third, that's when employees get the holiday, so it is a little convoluted.
Yeah, don't meet on the second, just, uh, when, when is your other July meeting? And that's when I'll say people need to let you know by if they're gonna be on the committee.
The planning board regularly, is scheduled to regularly meet the first and third Thursdays of every month. So first being the work session date assigned, and then the third Thursday is usually in the teens.
So I'm gonna say at the visioning session that people need to let you know before July sixteenth if they wanna be on the committee, that that's the night the planning board will be appointing the committee. Everybody gets a, get a break early for the holiday.
Right, by the way, before I forget it, um, we have two small applications before the planning board. You'll get your stuff, this is what, the fourth, you'll get it for next Friday pickup, which would be the eighth? I don't know, and, no, eleventh, twelfth, whatever, anyway, so anticipate the week of June seventeenth. I have all these ZBA dates in my head, that's why I'm always hesitating, 'cause there's a lot of overlap. The, the, two weeks from this week, you will have two meetings. You will have the sixteenth, which is the Tuesday, for the visioning session, and then that next Thursday is our regular planning board public hearing meeting, at which you have two small applications, so it'll be a busy week.
Eighteen.
Yeah.
What is it?
That's, what do you mean?
What is it?
It's the zoning map, that's the zoning map, that's what I have to work with. It shows the different zones, and the colors and everything, that, that is not the color is agricultural, which is the A.
So that goes all the way down to the Bridgewater line on Route Three, agricultural, huh? So, um, well, let's, um, so let's go back to the implementation, discuss with the implementation section, and. I overheard you saying that you tried really hard to get things from the Conservation Commission, was, was that successful? Should we go to that page? No?
I mean, I think most of the stuff in the, was that in the, um, what section, was that the?
I think that's the land use, some of it is natural heritage, kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think it was mostly the natural heritage, I think a lot of that stuff, um, I can speak to some of it.
Mm-hmm. So let's start there, let's start with page thirty-two, with natural heritage. Has anything changed or been done kind of deliberately for, um, dealing with excavations?
I don't think there's been any, um, zoning changes.
Do you have excavation regs?
We just defer to one fifty-five E, and, and unless there's something in the floodplain, in the E S, in the environmentally sensitive zone slash floodplain, the zoning ordinance speaks to that to a certain extent.
How about ag land? The next thing, minimizing the loss of productive farm land has, has the board or Conservation Commission?
Nope.
Taken any action there?
Nope, not to my knowledge.
Have there been any zoning, the next bullet, have there been any zoning changes to steer growth differently? To make some zones lower density and others higher density?
There, there, there was an effort a couple of years ago to, to change development in the ESC, but the, the amendment failed, so I would say no.
Change it how? Lower?
Make it more stringent, yeah, more restrictive.
I don't really know what the next bullet means this kind of thing.
One of our biggest problems is the constant crawling and outwards of student rentals.
And we talked quite a bit about that on the land use and, and economic development. Um, and the natural heritage, um, the next thing, have you, do you, have you strengthened your lighting regulations at all?
Not really, there was a policy initiative to, to go to, and this isn't necessarily, uh, dark skies, it's just more energy efficient to, to use a more efficient bulb, but no, I mean, we have, we have a policy about, um, what's the word? Tr- well, trying to, to make sure that any development includes that, but in terms of regulatory language, no, we don't.
I think there, there was a issue in regards to, uh, Lee Light. Uh, they were, they put those over quite a lot of the town's lighting, but we, they found out that there were certain signs on Route one seventy-five A that, that the lighting was shooting right out, straight out, and it was blinding a lot of the drivers. I don't know how that was resolved, probably like everything else, it sort of swept under the rug, and nobody ever fixed it.
And were there any changes to the zoning dealing with water resources? Any strengthening of the zoning for water quality? Sup, no, strengthening of stormwater requirements, or groundwater?
I think you're.
Bruising?
Not tech, not, not technically on a regulatory basis, I mean, by, you know, implementation, the board does do that 'cause we have a town engineer who is particularly stringent about that kind of stuff, so, um, it's, it's been positive, but it's only because everyone is, is being moralistic, if you will, about it. Yeah, I mean, you know, the, once again, we'd said before that, that site division regs and subdivision regs are old and, and patchworked and somewhat ambivalent, if not wishy-washing in places.
How can you have a, a master plan when your zoning really doesn't have any strength at all?
Well, 'cause the master plan, I mean, it's chicken and egg to a certain extent, but the master plan theoretically is where you're supposed to start, you're supposed to know what you're trying to achieve.
It's not.
Right, and, and the zoning ordinance is, is the tool.
So it sounds like, um, let's go to just the next page, number nine, there's some specifics in there about updating the environmentally sensitive zone, was that, was that the amendment that failed, doing some of this? Uh, no?
I don't think that was the, the, it was, um, article that was presented that wasn't a result of this.
No, it was, it was a petition or an article.
So I'm gonna ask why, why is it no on so much? There was no on most of the land use, it was no on most economic regulation, no on most of the natural heritage. What, we is, we is the pushback, is it, did, did this not reflect what the voters supported? Or was it a ballot was dropped along the way, and now you have the planning board and Sharon, and you, and you wanna move forward?
I think what happened is, is it was, you know, very prominent and everything, and as soon as the, the president died down, they thought it was a dish, you know, and it stayed there.
So how do we, I think we need to be talking about the question of how do we change that?
Well, I mean, even with this, you see, um, you know, two columns, the, the actual item, and then the responsibility at the time. And, and usually when you do a strategic plan, you have, you know, this kind of like layout, and there is kind of enforcement that some of the, actually, if we're targeting a date like two thousand nine is conservation.
But there's way too much, too, and I did just what you said, and I looked at that column, and the Conservation Commission was supposed, a volunteer board with no staff was supposed to do all this in two thousand, and then probably all on the next page and the page before, so there was a little problem.
Well, you know, it's the same idea.
They said it was overambitious.
The same idea is dumpsters in Plymouth. At one time, it was really bad, they cleaned it up, and now it's real bad again, no one ever really follows through.
But so it, I, I guess, I mean, that's why I like to talk about this as a starting point, because I don't, it's not in anybody's interest for me to leave you with a plan that doesn't get implemented.
There's no, there's no real mechanism for implementation, that's the problem.
Well, I think that's part of, this has gotta be part of the process, is to create a different mechanism than just a, someone who has responsibility.
Assigning responsibility and then walking away.
And I think there's gotta be regular check-ins, I mean, I have something like this for my job at work, and I check in with my boss every two weeks, and we go through those things, it's supposed to come up during that time, so, um, right.
Maybe we need more focus on that while we develop the plan, is, is not just kind of the what and the who, but the how.
Yeah.
The bigger what partners can be brought in and what funding sources.
Is the turnover of people in Plymouth. You know, you take like, uh, the, like, many of the towns around here, they have industries that have full-time people, and they stay there for years and years and years, so you can have some type of enforcement. But now with the turnover they have in Plymouth, you don't have that continuity of, of.
But, but other college towns do, so I, I don't think that that's our result of.
I'm sure this is not a unique situation with the implementation that hasn't been implemented.
It's enough, but I wanna know, but this, no, but usually, usually if there's a lot of knows, the politics changed, or, or we tried that and it got voted down.
Some of this is procedural within other overarching responsibilities, I mean.
But a lot of it is the planning board's regulations and zoning amendments.
Well, right, and that's why most, right.
And this, this is why I say we should have outside people, like from the college town, it comes in and says, hey, you know, this is the way we get it, but, but we don't, we're our own little island here that, uh.
Well, I could see Rebecca, Rebecca was saying that, you know, she sits in with her boss every two weeks and says, what's, what's the update? What's the status?
Yeah.
So who's the boss in this, in this scenario here? That's the problem.
Planning board.
Planning board is.
It's the planning board's plan, and, and it, and most of these things were up to the planning board.
It's, it's a boss, um, but I think there can be other people either tracking, or, I mean, maybe a person can bring into the planning board's attention and say, hey, we've got a date here that's slipping, um, you know, you need to follow up to make sure that we're on track.
It is the planning board's plan, though, it's, it's the plan, we're, it's other boards in town, it's the planning board's recommendations for those.
But, but the other thing is.
It's the planning board that would say to the select board or Conservation Commission, what can we do to help you get this?
But the thing is, that you look at tonight, we got, what, four members here? I don't even, several members are here, we used to have a policy that if you miss three meetings, you are out of the planning board.
But I mean.
But we don't, I, some of these people, I, I don't know, are they still on the planning board, if they're not on the planning board?
The person that usually sits there is an alternate.
Right, and Mike Bank is excused, but I mean, look at, look at this, and I'm just, I'm not casting aspersions, I'm just saying, this is under community facilities, which we won't get to. Acknowledging that undeveloped land does not burden the town with demands for services. Evaluate the fiscal impact of public investment in land conservation and act accordingly to maximize the positive impacts of such investments. That's a PhD thesis, and I'm not being sarcastic, I mean, this is, this is.
Well, no, somebody already did that, I mean, that's, there are, there are, there are quotes online of.
No, but you know what I'm saying, I mean, this, this, this was a massive, major wish list.
Okay, so what I, what I'm hearing here is let's, let's, let's have some realistic goals.
Yeah.
Apps, I said that from the outset, that's why I said at the very beginning, you must take this and look at it.
Right.
Because this is not reality, I know, I know, but I mean.
And I'm thinking that we're not just gonna update it, we're gonna make it smaller.
I, no, what I'm saying.
Some targeted policy statements with a few actions on it.
It was so loaded last time, it's unbelievable, and, and.
I think up, it's gonna be updates less.
This would take seriously a planning staff of about ten people to implement all this, and a committee meeting seven days a week, I mean, and some of it is, already occurs and under other protocols, it's like, why is it in here?
As I said.
I know.
Two hours to read the minute.
So, so it's speaking. So we're gonna have this visioning session, right?
Yeah.
And we're gonna get a whole slew of ideas that we're gonna somehow incorporate into the master plan, right?
Three basic questions, three basic questions.
Right.
Right, but how do you take that, that massive response and condense it into two or three things we can do?
Oh, you don't.
In any one year?
I, I take it and I come back with a draft vision statement and.
No, no, but in terms of the master plan itself, right?
You don't, you don't use the results of that one day to do anything but the visioning statement and some ideas for what goes on the survey.
Right, that's not what I'm getting at, what I'm getting at is, we, there's this giant document that's basically unusable because it's too big and too complex, and that's because we got all these opinions from everybody, and everybody.
It's like the federal code.
How do you make it a small, usable document that could generate results, that's the question.
You, you make a lot. You, you make a lot of it be policy statements. They're, they're not going to happen, but they're, when there's a great opportunity or a choice to make, what guides that? And you may have a list that's much smaller of actual recommendations.
I think also just having a regular, I don't know, work session or something like that where we regularly check in every time about what progress we're making towards this step. So it happens every, every single month.
Well, you should, and all year long, we should be thinking about, and I've said this before and I am going to preach, and not just to you guys, but to all the planning boards, you've got to be thinking about changes to your zoning amendments all year long. And, and we don't have to try to revamp because we know the zoning ordinance as it exists now is terrible, but we, we didn't, we couldn't even get definitions, basic definitions last year.
Yeah.
For, I mean, you know, we've got to do something.
The, the problem with the master plan in Plymouth had been, it was, I don't know when it was implemented, but it was at least five, six, eight, seven years ago, and there was a half inch dust on it. And anybody mentioned the master plan in the planning board meeting, they were ushered out of the room because, because nobody wanted to talk about it. I tell you, it, nothing was, how many times did you ever hear about the master plan?
So we're gonna, over the next eighteen months, we're going to be trying to have a culture of change.
Yes, and, 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 um, goals that, that are somewhat achievable or triage the goals. Well, no, but at least triage in order of importance.
Well, I think it's, I think part of these, you have kind of goals, policies, recommendations all mushed together.
Yes, exactly.
And called it all an implementation plan. So, so now it's kind of discouraging, but if, if this looked different, it wouldn't have as much to be, you know, focusing on in terms of action items.
Some of the comments I got from the conservation commission when they saw the word that said responsibility with conservation commission repeatedly under it, it was, they're like, what do you mean this is our responsibility? And, um, and some, because some of it is very heavy.
So that'll be important with, with a roundtable discussion on those topics that make sure it's a joint meeting with the conservation commission and it must you get a couple of people from conservation commission on the master plan committee.
And I think you're going to have to find out that the conservation is going to have to become more realistic, you know? It's not pulling wings off and flies, but it's still not having the, the most perfect world and, and have lush, beautiful forests though, and never cut a tree down.
So, so let's shift this a little bit and go to this one-page thing with the land use recommendations. And I'm going to ask a different question. I'm not going to ask, did you do these things?
Just right, no.
I'm going to ask if you think there's still support for these things.
Well, that's, yeah.
About, and it's kind of a two-part question. One is amongst the planning board and the other is amongst voters. Right? So one would be continue to improve public roadways on Green Street, Highland Street, Depot Street, Merrill Street, Lanin Street, Russell Street, Pleasant Street.
Still pertinent.
Still pertinent to everybody. There'd be consensus.
Well, I think, in my estimation anyway, I think that we should take care of the streets that we have right now. Because if you go drive around Plymouth, you need a Humney or a tank to get through some of these streets. So why make more streets when you can't take care of the streets you got in our wreck?
These are, look, these are present streets.
They are being, yeah, they're being...
Will this still be the list?
Yeah.
See, it...
Might be more streets thrown in, um, but...
See, at the, at the time that they had this last planning board...
Some of the reconfiguring came after this, right?
Yeah, but they wanted...
Yes.
Roundabout and...
Yeah, they wanted a roundabout down, they, they had six roundabouts in the town of Plymouth.
So is any of this, or, should we cross any of these off?
Yeah, I think Merrill Street's been taken care of. Russell Street's okay, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, folks, Pleasant Street, Depot's still a bit of a wreck.
Yeah.
Highland is continual and under, in, in process.
Green Street is...
Langdon is, has sinkhole issues essentially, and there've been additional, there've been additional, um...
Streets identified? I don't know, I don't think it was just...
Well, Bell, Bell Road's been taken care of to a certain...
High, high, Highland Street is, I've had people in West and all over the place saying, my God, when are you going to fix that street? That's right up on the very top of the hill.
Well, I know Paul's on top of it, I know the highway department has a, well, Bill would know.
Yeah, we got, yeah, the money's allocated for Ohio Street, et cetera. Um, we're looking at some, well...
Isn't that progress from, from Ward Hill down through to the Judge's Kent, Judge Kent? That's the last phase, but this is beyond going further up the road where they develop a new road in.
Are there some that you'd add to this list?
There may be.
Specifically, first, but I think, um, you know, that's, that's something we can update easily.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, everyone's going to say that every road should be, I mean, you know how that comes in.
So let's, let's look at the second one so that we're talking about something more specific about roads of configuration, right? Um, some of that, is any of that fixed?
Foster Street's underway with DOT, so that's off the list. Cummings Hill Road and Parker Street.
Why would we, why would we work with DOT?
Because it, it accesses through to...
Oh, okay. Well, that, no, the Cummings Hill access to three is complete, right?
Yeah.
So Cummings Hill's got its own issue, but it's farther up.
There's a dirt road there.
So Parker Street...
The hill is off there.
There's a call written in, it's Washington Avenue.
Okay, so I lost you in there.
So just Parker Street? The rest are Foster Street and Cummings Hill Road?
Yeah.
Are in process or being taken care of?
Uh, yeah, I guess.
Or been taken care of?
Yeah, discussions, money being allocated, that kind of stuff.
Is North Main Street in particular still?
Yeah, but I mean, are, are these still high-intensity lands? That was the recommend, that was the...
Well, they don't go there yet, that's...
Okay.
Nick, you got to hit on that.
But is that, were there still improvements needed along Route Three, North Main Street?
If the topic is for, you know, this, we're going to work with the Department of Transportation to develop plans for improvements, not town roads, but we're looking at...
Is this talking about like by Rite Aid and is that what that means about North Main Street?
Nope.
No.
Other side.
Yeah, I don't understand North Main Street in particular because our bottleneck is at the monkey and it's South Main Street.
Yes.
So I, I don't understand that.
Well, unfortunately, but I mean, you know, in number one...
What's North Main Street?
What's North Main Street?
I can't, yeah.
South Main Street.
What's North Main Street?
Before the interchange, Ninety-three interchange, um, the railroad bridge, where Foster's, um, the common man Foster's complex, that's all North Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably from the incubator on up or something.
Yeah.
And maybe Plymouth Fire Sure was like an issue at some point with drainage and such. Yeah, I don't know if they...
So we're not sure if this would really bubble to the top or not.
Drainage due to the redevelopment.
Right.
Yeah, but I don't know.
So I'm going to write maybe on a date. I mean, it'll just kind of help me think about what issues might come up at the...
I mean, some of these are good policy recommendations, but then they veer off into specifics that get way out there.
Right, but what I'm trying to come out of these meetings with is some idea of what's on people's minds.
Right, right.
What's been worked on, what, what might, what I, what might I hear?
Right.
In, in a couple of weeks? What should I learn more about?
I think that a lot of this had to do, again, where it was loaded with downtown. Uh, they, they seemed to emphasize on downtown and at that time, at least, Tenny Mountain was the redheaded step done. That, and that, and that shows up readily because of what is up there, what kind of buildings and all that stuff is up on Tenny Mountain Highway. They, they really didn't pay too much attention to that.
I mean, I think downtown is a compact next year's village, which is pretty well developed now, seven years later.
But then it's kind of, it's almost as a, if I hadn't heard your last couple of discussions, I'd think, geez, this is strange that that's in the same statement as exploring of what we used to conserve single-family houses.
Well, yeah, I'm seeing a lot of this.
Not usually so much what you think of in a downtown.
No, there's a lot of...
You think of multi-family in a downtown.
Well, if you look at the, at, you know, so like, we're looking at the entire green area?
What's your green area?
Because, I mean...
Looks like single-family residences, my guess.
Yes.
Yeah. So where we're looking at would like, you know, as far as like improving the downtown area.
Downtown area, probably.
Just yellow?
No, I think that's, uh, Green Street right there, I think that this right here is Main Street.
Yellow.
There's lots of bills proper there that, um, bill's commercial.
But that, that was in the heyday. I don't know if this occurred in two thousand three, two thousand four, when that particular issue of the last master plan, that's when the housing was at such a serious crisis point. And now a lot of the single-family homes have been changed into rental housing. So you've got that, things have morphed to, to a different stage and they seem to be working okay in and of themselves. So, yeah, some of this policy stuff, it's obsolete.
Because you just wouldn't make that tiny little yellow area the downtown and then say you want single-family in it when that whole green thing is single-family in it.
No, I think that's what was occurring though.
Yeah.
You had, you had a big turnover of single-family housing, which went to multi-unit or duplex housing at the time. But now it's kind of gentrified into that. It's, it's the kind of inner campus ring, if you will.
However, you don't really know because you don't have the data to capture.
We have no data.
About to bring it up, but...
We have no data.
But in terms of what you would normally want, that's just contradictory to say, here's our downtown and we want to keep the single-family in it.
It's not...
Right.
When I read something like that, it sounds like to me, oh, well, someone said that during the visioning sentence and so they just stuck it in there so they would include everybody's opinion.
Well, that's the thing, if, if you, if you want, it won't have to aspire to everything, then you have a document that you can't implement.
Yeah.
It's just demanding.
And this single family is, is on a flat surface. I have asked time and time and time again as to what land do we actually have that somebody could build on? In other words, you can't build on the top of Plymouth Mountain, which a lot of these are non, you, you can draw, you can draw a section like that and say, yeah, that's all single-family housing. Some of that you could not possibly put single-family housing on.
Well, it's just the zone.
And that's how you can pretty much put a single-family in.
Is, are your tax maps detailed?
Yes, and I was going to...
I'm just saying, in the town of Plymouth, how much land do we actually have to work with?
I can do some maps and throw steep slopes and wetlands and all, so we can, we can have that in front of us and have that conversation.
Right.
But as I said, I was looking, I was asking, how much land, how much land along Tenny Mountain Highway do we have to actually work with? How much land do we have?
Well, I think you have that in the Tenny Mountain study.
That's the, yeah.
To a certain extent. We have not updated our, um, developed and undeveloped lands because that's a GIS project.
But do you have a digital, if you have GIS tax maps?
We have GIS tax maps, yeah. So we can pull some basic stuff, but in terms of any, um, particular set, data sets like slopes or anything like that, that's...
But I, if, if it's really GIS, I can just pop that on.
Yeah.
I think so.
The problem is...
You know.
Let's pop it on.
That's right. If something besides taping things...
Sometimes they'll tell you it was until you asked for it and, well, no, it's not really geographically referenced.
But we do have, we do have, the town pays a bit of money for this, so we do have a proprietary copy, a disk, electronic, and, yeah.
The key is that it's really geographically referenced.
But you see, like on Tenny Mountain Highway, on the north side...
A lot of them, a lot of the times they say it's GIS and it turns out not really.
On the south side of, of Tenny Mountain Highway, that's all ledge and it's almost impossible to build on. But if you look here, you feel, oh, yeah, there's, there's kinds of land there.
Well, no, that's a zoning map. I don't think anybody looks at the zoning map. They need to see the slopes and the wetlands and all that.
Right, you gotta, you gotta know how much building they own.
This, yeah, this doesn't...
We'll get there even after print the, the tax maps out on some clear thing that we, they, you know, old-fashionedly...
That is something that was never done before and that, that was, that governed a lot of the decisions as to what they were doing.
Well, that's easy now, so, um, let's go through this list. This is helpful, it's helpful to me to get a sense of things. Um, so was, was anything targeted for more commercial development?
No.
It sounds like you're saying a no because nobody really looked at what was developed.
See, back years and years ago, we had bootstrap in Plymouth, which all the people in Plymouth bought stock in town Plymouth, and we got Hitchna here, but it, for, and it was here for a very short period of time, and then they drove them out, like they did Lowe's, and they went to Littleton. So...
So what, let's, it, the, let's stick with the, is there still support for this thing? I'm sorry, where are the four?
Well, I mean, the, the...
Would there still be?
Tenny Mountain Highway in the previous addition, addition of the master plan was the designated economic development area because obviously it's somewhat unconstrained, certainly less constrained than the downtown area.
So in a way you did four and five and...
Yeah, but four, and there's still other areas within four that we could target as well.
Mm-hmm. Um, was Boulder Point in two thousand, let's say, four to eight, that wasn't?
So that's what I'm thinking of actually.
Yeah, so that has been accomplished somewhat.
Boulder Point was an industrial pack for years and years and years and it just, no one could get it out.
I remember when it was first carved out in the nineties.
Yeah.
Because I lived in Hampton then, but then, you know, I went north and I didn't know when this heard.
Number six, is there still support for identifying areas for higher density residential growth?
I don't.
Well, you know, I'd get, if you throw Boulder Point on the bus as well, I mean, we're looking at Soldier Run, um...
Right, but that's, but that's very special at this point, but...
There might be some additional housing.
Yeah, that's more available to the general population.
Is there, is there support for that? Is, is it, if you were running a master plan survey today, would you ask, is there support for it? Or would you ask where, do you want to see higher residential growth?
Well, I mean, higher density residential growth...
Well, you see, up in Tenny Mountain Highway, behind a Boulder Point, there is a plan for seventy-five single-family homes up there.
Not talking about specifics, in general, do you feel like people are saying, we need more places in town for higher density residential?
I haven't heard anything, but anecdotally, when affordable housing, um, so to speak, the Plymouth Woods project came online, I think that was thirty-two units or so, a couple of years ago, those got snapped right up. And when the sixteen units of sixty-two and older housing on Fairgrounds Road was completed, those had a waiting list before the approval was dry, the ink was dry and the approval was...
Right, but that's a whole nonprofit organization.
No, it's not. It's, it's subsidized to a certain extent, but there's payment in lieu of taxes and they are paying some.
Taxes, right.
Right, but, but, no, I'm just speaking to the type of housing. I'm just trying to give Tara some background. That's all I've seen. I haven't seen.
There was some talk about like having, you know, like, you know, older people that are downsizing that would like some. Um, and, you know, like cluster housing or something like that.
Right, right. But I, I mean, nothing's.
Fire for that, but nothing's.
But in general, not.
No, I haven't heard anything and nothing's come across my desk.
I think, I think one of the biggest things in Plymouth is your higher taxes. So I really think if you really looked into it, your downsizing, uh, as long as it, you know, wasn't subsidized and all that stuff. I think that you would have a big demand for that in Plymouth because of the tax situation.
Number eight.
Um, there was a transportation enhancement grant that had been awarded when I first got here in two thousand and ten, but there was the ripple effect on the economic downturn. So the town, um, turned it down because there was a fifty some odd thousand dollar match, cash match. So that didn't materialize.
Or what? Or in addition, the amphitheater looking at.
In addition, yeah.
Is it something there's still support for doing more there?
To be real, to be realistic, how much actual income can you come from that? You know, your kayaking, canoeing and sandwiches made at home is not going to do Plymouth a heck of a lot. It makes Plymouth pretty.
People appreciate paying higher taxes, services and recreational opportunities that are available for them. So. So I think that would be kind of like.
I agree.
So what would you point me at?
What about, um, number nine?
I think they.
Traffic patterns near the Plymouth School complex.
I think there was a, a change in the entrance or the, what, what happened? Well, I don't know. I, I think it's the same as when I drove my brother to school in nineteen ninety-six.
I want to call it a new ward bridge and a bridge that goes over the Baker River to Tenny Mountain Highway. And that was like early on, I said, I'd like to pursue that. And there's like an old bridge abutment.
There's dirt on your wetlands, probably.
Well, when the DOT, as Yonah was here, remember?
I do, I do, yeah.
And he, he would be considering something like that versus, I mean, no other curb cuts for any, any business in that, you know, stretch between, you know, the.
Oh, I, I see what you mean. It's Ward Bridge. I thought they were talking about interior, they refigured stuff of the interior, nevermind.
And the other one that we were kind of like talking about recently that was kind of like on our scope within the select board is to look at, um, possibly where the community gardens are, and then it goes in the PSU property. And there's, might be a consideration of putting in an entry that goes from, um, North May to, um, you know, the back of the schools. And it's just, it would be good to have like a supplemental, you know, entrance negress for school buses especially. You know, like, you know, ones that get out of town can like just go on to Main Street.
So it's still an issue and still something.
Still a plus, yeah.
And, and I have heard some further discussion by landowners who could accommodate that in a positive manner. But it's a little, um, chronologically out there.
We're not gonna see money from DOT to build any.
You're not gonna see money from DOT for anything. They are absolutely strapped. No, no, I mean.
It's a policy, nothing new except ninety-three.
Ninety-three, touch care of that.
Um, the downtown traffic patterns were changed.
Right.
Looking well, people happy?
No, I can, I can tell you many, 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 many people talking about that, um, road going in front of the post office. Being the, since that's a federal road, that's a state road that has precedence over the one going down the hill. So it's a real bottleneck sometimes. And I, there's no way around it either.
It isn't clear to the driver what they're supposed to do there.
I know.
I think yes. Well, yes, I'm, but.
I mean, I thought blind spot when they're coming into your left because you're looking.
When you're coming down is the, you know, when you're coming around, you don't know if you can cut off the people.
It doesn't, right, it doesn't authorize you.
No, it's true. It's back, it's back in the nineteen thirties. That's what it designed for and that's where it should have stayed.
That one corner is still, it didn't like, come on, right? At these, there's two different, entirely different thoughts in number ten.
Yeah, and I'm thinking like, you know.
Most traffic patterns, one zoning.
I was thinking like South Main, um, is also a traffic pattern that would be beneficial to look at and parking solutions to.
But we are looking at that at a level, right.
Because of a lack of parking or because the on-road parking makes it too.
You got two narrow strips of, you know, there's two-way traffic, two, two parking, you know, lanes on each side and.
I was thinking about that today of, it, it provides its own traffic calming though at springtime.
Yeah, especially when somebody opens a door. I don't know if it calms it down, but.
Speed down and pedestrians safe.
Yeah, but people like go over the lines to try to avoid, you know, it's just.
How many actions have actually been, been reported down in that section?
I'm not certain, but.
Do I have that data? I don't look that.
Yeah, well, it, I, I think.
I bet they're not bad.
They're not bad.
No, no, because you do have to slow down or your vehicle will get wrecked. But DOT is aware of that, as is the town.
And they're aware of a lot, but they.
Getting everything out of them we possibly can, trust me. And, and the, the local districts are very formidable to work with.
Love it. It's kind of interesting. It doesn't sound like much of that happened.
Yeah, it's kind of theoretical.
Rail, is there still?
I like a Ferrari too.
It sounds like they say preserve the feasibility means keep the tracks. Yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. The tracks are still in place. And you get, well, now that Ray Burton's gone, you don't, they used to have at least once or twice a year the railroad.
Some of the tracks were still be done.
Just to take the rust off. I don't know.
Why is the track, look, some of it looks re-done.
I don't.
Well, they, I don't know, they're reaching out, put gravel up in there and.
Definitely taking care of it.
I think they're doing it for the snowmobiles, isn't that right?
I don't know.
They don't have to put stone out for that.
Yeah, they don't need the tracks or anything for the snowmobiles. I don't even understand what this means.
Well, this is in some of the.
Medium intensity.
I don't, because we don't have the medium high and low in front of us. Is there no sort of natural resources inventory map?
Yes.
Those are in our line?
I believe so, yeah, right?
I'm sorry, what?
The natural resources inventory.
Okay, I don't have that toy.
Didn't we talk about this last time that they're? Yes, um.
I haven't forgotten.
I, yeah, we made some copies.
Yeah, okay.
But, but it's fairly obsolete, like ten years, I think.
The natural resources don't tend to.
Well, they don't as fast, but no, but right, but I.
That's what we, please, I'll look at my file and I don't. Fuck, I have a page memory of it, but it's not in the sponsored stuff that I grabbed from my database. Easements, have there been more conservation easements? More public access, any progress in that? Is there still support for that? Is it?
I would say so, yeah.
God, who are you talking to?
I don't know. Probably not John.
No.
Is it Tenny Mountain Peace? Was that Newish or?
I think that's, that's old. It's been.
We exhausted flies here, I hope we're doing it.
But yeah, there's new trails and just a couple of new trails.
So the support for enhanced natural systems still more or?
I would say just judging by the use of the trails. Yeah. And, um, mountain biking in Fox Park, things like that, I would say absolutely.
Some of food, some of local food. Certainly getting, getting, um, free.
Yeah.
We skipped over Titty Care.
Well, we just talked about trails.
Okay, well, that's also a footpath along Baker River, uh, Smith Bridge. That's, um, you know, that's still on the, uh, the docket there.
Okay.
They weren't, uh, it's, sorry, vacation, they weren't in the bike path.
Yep, bike path, maybe even a snowmobile path. I mean, if we're gonna be.
Did that ever come to any, any fruition, like, uh, landowner easements, rights away or anything? Or is it just still in the kind of?
I don't know, because, um.
I mean, I don't, I don't know the year of its, I don't know its origin. I'm.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And, um, on the south side of Tenny Mountain Highway, it's, you know, PSU pretty much on property. And, you know, we got to.
Well, I know that PSU was hoping to do some of, get that, uh, awareness level up.
We're also talking about how to get the people that use those paths to the other side of Tenny Mountain Highway.
So what you want to get me to with the tax map, this is connected to what you said, is the database that I can link to it to. I can see owners and use and don't.
You know, you wouldn't, let me, you really, it would expedite things, um, Tara to.
See, when, when Lowe's was coming.
Email, you want to say what I want to say.
We had a bike path.
Is that a town employee or?
I'm, I'm writing it, yeah. It's, she's the assessing supervisor because she's just, yeah.
You give me that.
Yeah.
Because what happens then is, um, there's, there's a contractor who does a lot of our towns who pushes back on giving the towns their own data sometimes in a useful way. So it's not always easy.
The, the, the biggest problem on the snowmobile trail and also light trail is the crossover on Tenny Mountain Highway.
Bridge.
Up tunnel.
Pedestrian tunnel, a mere four million dollars.
Yeah.
We can drain big, I know, I know.
Majesty Highway.
Certainly is. The last time they did that was at Storyland and I think it was nineteen ninety-two when I was working with DOT and.
Didn't Park Street there too, did it too, right?
Yeah, I think they put some of their own money. What about, they're in the tunnels.
Yep, well, those two, they got two. This is a little more branded though.
Oh, bigger tunnels. Okay.
I have not noticed either of these tunnels, story and or car.
But you might have noticed any pedestrians either.
On the other side and, um.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Or, uh, the ski, what's the, um, ski area up there for the tunnel too, I think.
Not gonna happen. For a while.
Thanks Tara. That's a good idea.
Just conveying DOT's statements that only preservation, I mean.
That's what happened to the master plan last time. That's, uh, they were, they had granular ideas and not any to put in it.
These are wonderful ideas, but this is, this is.
It's also.
When I first read it, when I first got here, I went.
It's like, uh, they want a, a road off of Tenny Mountain Highway to, to go up along the Baker River. So they don't have, so the traffic in Tenny Mountain Highway, which is gonna cost the town millions of dollars. But it's, it's wonderful. You know, if you had the money, but I'd like a Ferrari too.
Well, in terms of paying it on to money, um, is there a capital improvements program? I'm looking at D one, yes?
Yeah, there is.
And it works pretty well. I mean, it's, it replaces the, the, you know, the rolling stock, the service vehicles. There's an awful lot of equipment that's involved in a, in a town of this size.
Until about nineteen.
Is RSMS been ever done as part of it? The Road Service.
Should be. Yeah, no, I, I know. I've advocated that, uh, not per se. I don't think so unless it was a billion years ago. Well, I was hoping so.
About two thousand and nine, every year we put X number of dollars into, into a reserve fund for, for the capital reserve. But now it's when something breaks down, you buy another one.
No, there's, there's still regular outlays.
Not, not the way it was.
If you knew it advanced the budget for it.
Right, right.
So any, anything that we haven't talked about in either of these meetings that's a really hot front, hot burner issue for the town right now, something that we haven't talked about at the last meeting or tonight? Something that the people have been pushing for or the planning board has wished people would support.
Is there, is it, has it, there had been some talk about, uh, doing more commercial business down on what they call three A that leads out towards Tenny Mountain Highway for probably four or five years ago. They were trying to make some, I'm of an actual master plan for the, for commercial businesses and so forth to go out there. But, but it just never seemed to turn to light.
The thing is, uh, where we're at right now is, um, Tenny Mountain has been purchased. They're still playing their cards fairly close to the vest, but the, you know, um, there's been publicity, not, not coming out of this building, but from, from other, um, agencies that, uh, that speak to getting the ski area up and running. And then some peripheral, peripheral concerns. So I, I think that's valid. I think it's bona fide. It's, it's not really thoroughly, um, detailed at this point and, and certainly not, you know, ready for, for publication. But I, there was a quite a bit of money, you know? The, the property had tax liens against it. So I think these are fairly serious players.
See, the big problem.
So that's a consideration up there.
Big problem again is land because anything below Tenny Mountain Highway, um, Tenny, Tenny Mountain, it all swarmed out through there. So it's almost non-buildable land on, on a lot of that. And then there's ledge on the other side there. So.
That's why there's a mountain. It's gatiful.
It's a beautiful idea, but when you actually look into the nitty gritty of it, it's very, a little bit of that land that is actually.
But in terms of economic development, upgrading infrastructure.
Hey, here's the roundabout, you know, from here over here. And as you go down the run, roundabout, here's Tenny Mountain.
Okay.
And in fact, the town owns a, a property in this area, which is not good property. Um, you know, so around here it's buildable.
Does the agricultural district support the doors?
Uh, uh, uh.
I think so to a certain extent.
Grocery store tried to, this is all ledge down through here.
Here, looks like fields.
It's just a, when three A comes for three A.
This is three A written here.
Okay.
Sounds like there's some issues with the zoning.
Well, the ag zone's a bit of a misnomer. I mean, because yes, it would support agriculture, but it's also very flexible in terms of zoning uses.
See, my, my big problem is I've lived here all my life, so it, it, and that's been considerable for most of the time of my life. So I know a lot of this, people come in and they make all these wonderful plans, but they don't know.
The constraints.
Yeah.
There are constraints and that's not being negative, that's being a ruleist.
A lot of people that are, I don't know, are these boards and so forth, aren't aware of. So they make these wonderful plans and, and all of a sudden they find out that they can't do it.
Are people pretty stuck with, stuck on the district boundaries as they are now? People happy with that or really?
It should be cleaned up too.
And your agricultural zone is.
I can only hear one person. Sometimes not even one.
Actually, we should run the chair.
Take turns. From the chair, I didn't even. So not just the cleaning up, but would it, would the. I mean, at some towns, if I try to ask a question about zoning, it's all even that way and that's the end of the conversation.
There were relatively recent, over time, changes to this, but.
Doing what?
Um, expanding and creating, I believe, a couple of new zones. John might have more institutional memory and Bill and even Rebecca, um, who's lived here a while, um, what, six, seven, eight? I don't know.
What are the new zones?
Um, Village, Village Commercial, wasn't that new and boundaries were shifted in here and this and that. But one of the downsides, and I've got to say this again, was when some of these changes were made and these additional zones were added, they bisect properties, which is insane.
That's weeds I don't want to get into.
No, well, I know, but I mean, when, when you're talking about zoning changes.
If you came up with, just let's pretend, expanding this over here or changing this entirely, that, is that kind of thing on the table?
No, but I don't think so.
Someone might bring it up actually, but, you know, but, um.
Hearing, no, I'm not, I'm not hearing anybody.
At the visioning session. I haven't heard it.
See, the problem you have is agricultural zone, there is.
Well, a lot of what people might want to do depends on how, what, what's happening in the market, you know? If there's six guys that want to build auto parts store next week, then yeah, we want a big commercial zone. If, if there's, houses aren't selling, which if you talk to the bankers in town, they're not. Um, then there's no drive for additional housing. I mean, the only kind of anecdotal evidence that Sharon talks about people, you know, needing housing or being on waiting lists, that type of stuff makes sense, but everything else is a little. Want to expand the current, I mean, you know, the commercial zone is not built out. Is there a demand to expand it?
It is not. It is not.
A lot of this is agricultural, which is not agricult, really agricultural.
What's the difference between the agricultural and a green, single family? What's the difference between those districts?
Agricultural is pretty much.
Anything, but, but, single family is more restrictive to, to limited commercial development type. Doctor offices, what, it's a low impact commercial development.
But, but other than cutting a little bit of hay in the fall to pay for the taxes, this is not agriculture. We've got three farms in town. But, but other than cutting a little bit of hay in the fall to pay for the taxes, this is no agriculture, we've got three farms in town, active farms in town.
And as far as the way they're drawn, that's a common wave, I mean, it's not, it's, probably half the towns are, like a five, even worse, like a five hundred foot from the road, and then it's just a strip, this is better than that.
Really?
And I'd much rather see the depth here than have it five hundred feet from the road, and you're promoting strip道路.
No, the, the, the dual stuff is more in there, yeah.
Partial lines are not, that's, it's more common not to, I agree that from, if I was in your chair, it would be a nuisance, I'm just saying it's common.
Well, it's just, I, I guess, I guess that's my editorial, it's my editorial comment, that, that if there were to be any sweeping changes, then it really should try to at least go along existing property lines or something, because it just, it's insane, there's no logic to it, in terms of changes.
Yeah, and certainly it makes it a lot simpler on implementation.
I haven't figured this out, yeah, I don't know really what all this is, I couldn't see that single family.
No, it's all agricultural.
Yeah.
Well, my overall thing.
Well, I don't know, I guess they ran out of, I don't, I don't know who colored it or why.
So, um, what's ICD?
Industrial commercial development, which is somewhat, there's a lot of similarities in some of these, they share a lot of common traits, I mean, if you look at the zone, that's why the zoning ordinance is so convoluted.
Agricultural means really?
Well, it's pretty, it's, it's the Wild West.
So, I'm not hearing that there are any kind of hot.
I don't think so, I haven't heard anything, I don't know if anybody else has, but nothing's come across, might ask.
Uh, I'm thinking Teddy Mountain is, um, you know, more realistic than probably we were thinking like, six months ago.
I think the zones function pretty well right now, it's just the, once again, the, the rulebook for this, the implementation piece for the zoning designations is the zoning ordinance, and that's a little.
See, the, the problem you have on Teddy Mountain Highway is the type of buildings that are out there, we got a bunch of tin.
You've got a lot of leftover metal fabrication, yeah.
And everything, and it doesn't enhance anybody to, uh, go out there and build a beautiful Lowe's building or something like that.
And you know, since, well, that we have a Fairfield Inn going in now, a three-story Fairfield Inn that's going in, you know, like, right around there, and Teddy, Teddy Mountain's targeting, um, well, year-round use, and also another, um, hotel.
Right, and then the master, the, the airport is having a master plan.
Back a few years ago, they had.
Wait, too fast.
So you can, so you can see and drive.
Get all the process that fast. Um, the hotel's going where?
There's gonna be a Fairfield Inn that's going behind the bank and McDonald's.
Are you familiar with the new, the bank and McDonald's?
Eighty-five room.
Hatch, uh, Hatch Plaza, yeah, Hatch Plaza.
Yeah.
Hannafords, you familiar with Hannafords? It's headed west on the opposite side of the road, with a new signal list.
And, and then what's being talked about?
Okay, so, if you go to their, uh, Facebook site, but, um, I see both pictures of the new snowmaking machine, they got, they got a couple, they're also re-roofing the lodge, they got a couple of pictures of that, but there's talk about having a year-round, I mean, they're talking about a year-round facility, also with a hotel.
Right, and they also, like, a few years ago, was gonna put a golf course down on the flat, which is, I'm saying, is all wetlands down there.
Right, but this is a different entity.
Do you expect any pushback on, on either of those, or people are gonna be happy to see?
Yes.
Well, yeah, the Fairfield Inn, I think it's probably a, a good idea for that area, and it doesn't impact the common man, and different clientele, different, you know.
It's, it's a real cohesive use, and it's low-impact, and the traffic study was done, and it's aesthetically pleasing.
You know, Teddy Mountain flourishes, and another hotel probably be useful too, and.
But, they, they, they have tried so many times to make Teddy Mountain a major ski area.
But they're not going for major, no, they're.
They've tried to.
They're, right, you're right, but, but this group is, wants to have it up and running on a small scale, like it was before, not in competition with Luna, not in competition with Waterville, totally different niche, because they have some other economic development ideas, which seem plausible, that's all I can say to that. But, it sounded doable, 'cause we got the Disney World scenario handed to us a couple times.
And the other big, the other big problem is, of the condominiums, they've got that, uh, the windmills up there that people seem to complain about somewhat because of the noise.
You, you can hear them, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear, I could hear my mom.
We can, we do think that, as is the case in this present master plan, that things are developing reasonably well out there in an ordered manner.
But you see, actually, the bank was not a new industry.
No.
It was, it just moved down from Hannaford's place, and McDonald's was not a new industry, Plymouth, that only moved from Route Three down there, so we have, we haven't really had any new commercial businesses other than auto parts stores.
No, but, but on the other hand, these, these, these changes have freed up Sears, just, this is anecdotal, moved into Hatch Plaza where the bank was, and someone else moved into Sears, and there is a prime piece of real estate off exit twenty-five where the McDonald's was, that is being eyed for several things.
But Sears is gone now.
Sears is gone?
No.
It's, it's going.
Yeah?
Cause they've got notification of it, on the new, on the square.
The new place, the retro, retrofit, yeah, I, I wasn't aware of that, but, but anyway, yeah, other than confused, tired.
I, I feel like in these two meetings, I've gotten a good sense of, of where things are at, to, to be able to help me frame the process as we go forward, so, I'm all set, and we're looking forward to the visioning session, that'll be fun.
Yeah, I, I, no, I was, excuse me for interrupting, I was gonna say, I, I think everyone, the, the visions are good, I don't think you're gonna see other huge visions, it's, it's the, it's the tools that we need to have to redevelop to implement some of this stuff.
And I, I appreciate your being here, because the last time, it was so one-sided and loaded, and you're here to be.
I told ya.
She can still one-size loaded.
She doesn't have time, but she has too many things to do.
Yeah, you're more open-minded and.
She's a facilitator, she's not a lobbyist.
Right, my, my view of the player's job is to figure out what the community wants, and help them evaluate different alternatives for, for getting there, yeah.
It seemed, it seemed like the last time it was done was like, multiple sides, so many different sides in that document.
Well, I mean, like I said, I mean, and I don't mean to crack on other people's work, but this was just seventy-five years' worth of, I mean, and never mind the funding, you don't wanna over, um, inflate people's expectations, I mean, I'm a pragmatist, and that's why I really want us to figure out some stuff that we could actually accomplish, and build on, and move and move and move, not, not try to just get everything under the sun.
There are some groups who, who help towns with these work subs, who I won't name because you're on cable TV, but, um, this has that look, of the laundry list, rather than, you know, there's, there's no processing in there.
Well, you know, I, I will say this, unfortunately, what, what this implementation chapter showed to me was that a lot of, not a lot, but a large, a significant portion of the tasks, if you will, were already being implemented, just under the aegis of the town, so maybe there was a lack of communication on things, I mean, a lot of this stuff, it's sub rosa, you know, it's like, what do you do all day, Sharon? A lot, but it's just not loud and on the front steps yelling about it, I mean, he's fixing this and dealing, not just me, but the, the town as an entity.
So, the master plan wants to say, continue doing X, Y, and Z, and add two or, yeah.
Right.
Look at what, the path is, what you're doing, and, and, you know, reiterate it. Right, because you can't take that for granted, I mean, in five years, the master plan needs to, you know, a lot of people will say, well, that doesn't need to be in the master plan, we're already doing that, well, it does, 'cause the master plan is what's, your zoning is based, rooted in, so you certainly want the master plan to talk about the things you're already doing, as well as.
Resubstantiate the good stuff, and, and not just keep adding and adding and adding, that's not what a master plan is, it's just really not.
The other thing too, is that, that a lot of people, and this has been a complaint for years, a lot of people move to Plymouth in their retirement years, they have very good retirement plans, they have very good, uh, incomes and stuff like that, and they want what they left behind.
Well, yeah, that's, that's classic, though, everywhere, come to New Hampshire and change it, you came to New Hampshire 'cause it was wonderful, now let's change it.
Hold on, I was kinda. No, people have lower expectations when they retire there.
In, in this part of the country, this is exactly what happened, and, and they come up with these wonderful ideas that's gonna cost millions of dollars, and we just don't have the money to do it, simple.
I mean, I think Plymouth does pretty well, if you've looked at the tax rate over the last few years, in spite of all the changes, it has been held.
Yeah, it has.
And no services have diminished, no, I know, it's, it's relatively high, but, but nonetheless, I mean.
But there again, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that's gonna be running elsewhere.
Well, Plymouth is a small town with, with big-town responsibilities, because of a lot of different aspects, it's hard.
You take, you take college, now, you take a, a, a town of either seventeen hundred or twenty-three hundred, whatever they wanna come up with, and, and you put twenty cops in that twenty-three hundred, or seventeen hundred population town, and they, they'd be falling over each other, but you have the college that creates a lot of problems, that needs ten cops in that thing, and the town of Plymouth has to pay for it.
There's a lot of.
And it's similar to the towns that have the large resorts, like Lincoln and Carroll.
But they're, they're paying taxes, those resorts are paying taxes, the, the, the colleges, there could be some in lieu of all.
We're circling back to the same thing.
Yeah, it's a very substantial payment of taxes.
Well, it's a per capita assessment on a lot of things, but anyway, so no one leaves without, um, I don't care if you make paper airplanes out of these, which John, maybe John will, write love letters, but, uh, if you'd like to disseminate these.
I don't know, I don't know love letters.
Just, I mean, to pass them out to your friends.
I just try to be realistic.
I'm teasing you, I'm teasing you, but you've gotta pass those out.
I tell you, as long as you're smiling, you can call me anything you want.
Passionate.
All right, are we, are we finished with our current business?
I don't know, you're the boss, you tell me, uh, we have nothing else.
I think we're finished with this current business, and I don't see any comments from the public, unless you'd like to make one, Tara?
No, I'm all set.
And then, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
And all, unless there are objections, we are adjourned.